We're going to call this meeting at order. Thank you, everybody, for coming early, so you made sure you got a good seat. Thank you for joining us today. We are adjourning out of closed session into regular session with no action taken. We'll go ahead with the call to order and roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Present.
Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Parlet?
Here.
Councilmember Spurr?
Present.
And Mayor Turner?
Present. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Spurr, would you please lead us?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is our acceptance of the agenda and urgency items. Do we have any urgency items?
No.
All right. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. We can vote on them at one time, or an item can be removed from the consent agenda, either by a council member, if anyone so chooses. Today, we have ordinances. Waive reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage per Government Code, section, or something like that. Minutes. Approve the minutes of the City Council Regular Meeting of June 5, 2018. Approve application 2018-022 with staff recommendations for the 2018 Lakeside Car and Boat Show event to be held August 18, 2018. Approve a resolution rescinding Resolution 2659 from 2018 and revising the master pay schedule in conformance with California Code of Regulations titled to Section 570.5. And lastly, approve an amendment to the agreement between the City of Clear Lake, City of Lakeport, and the County of Lake relative to operation of a local public educational governmental cable television channel referred to as the PIG channel. Are there any items that council wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Are there any of these items that the public would like to address? Seeing none, we'll take the motion.
Madam Mayor, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to citizens' input. Any person may speak for three minutes on a subject that's within the authority of the City Council but not already posted on today's agenda. Do we have any requests? Ms. Wildishock would like to speak about Shakespeare at the Lake and community forums.
I'll take three minutes for vote. Good evening.
Go, Wilda!
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity to remind you that Shakespeare at the Lake, the third time around, is coming up, the end of July, July 28 and 29, Saturday and Sunday night, 6:30 in Library Park. And the play is as you like it, set in the groovy 1960s, so be prepared for nostalgia time if you remember the '60s, not going to the phrase, and if you were there, you don't remember it anyway. But I am here to make you aware, and to make the world aware, that we are soliciting sponsorships. And I do have forums, and I'll have them available at any number of places, but sponsorships and donations and sales of food and beverage make it possible to present a free performance. And it is a collaborative effort of Mendocino College Lake Center, the Lake County Theater Company, Lake County Friends of Mendocino College, and the City of Lakeport. So all four entities are involved in one way or another in supporting it. So we hope that you'll be aware that sponsorships are welcome. The other thing I want to remind everyone, and many of you have signed up or know about the community forums that are being held. I'll switch from education to economic development. And the Lake County Economic Development Corporation has been working with the county and the two cities, the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay, and other partners to bring Dr. Robert Eiler to Lake County, the economist that's on the faculty at Sonoma State University and has been involved in helping many communities develop strategic economic plans. And so he is going to be here for three public forums that are coming up. This Thursday night in Middletown at the Twin Pine Event Center from 6 to 8 o'clock. Next Tuesday night here in Lakeport City Hall, 6 to 8 o'clock. And the following Thursday night at Clear Lake, the City Hall, if you have, 6 to 8 o'clock. So we hope that the community and folks who are interested in being involved in this process and wanting to learn more about it will come out to one of those sessions. This is the first round of community forums, the first two phases of the project. There will be a third phase in the fall, and we'll have additional community forums and opportunities for people to participate in this process. A reminder to everyone. Thank you.
Wilda, what was the date again for the play?
It's July 28 and 29.
July 2.
I have a few little handbills that we could put in your hand to remind you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who might want to speak who didn't fill out a sheet? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Solar financing. Approve the subject resolutions to authorize and direct the issuance of the bonds.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. Tonight, we're asking the council to approve, essentially approve, the issuance of this series 2018 Revenue Bonds for the Solar and Energy Efficiency retrofit project. And tonight, we're asking to hold a public hearing and to adopt the two resolutions, which are attached to the staff report. In the background, I think everybody's pretty well versed in the background of this deal. And the team has been working extremely diligently to, you know, get the deal to this point where we're ready to have you guys approve the legal forms. Today, we received the rating from S&amp;P at an A-minus rating, which is what had been anticipated throughout the deal. A little bit of the, just on the analysis, just to point out again, based on the economic analysis provided by NG, the team had reduced their 5% energy inflation down to 4%, and reran the numbers just to ensure that any adjustments to that would still be cash positive, and it was cash positive at a 4% energy cost escalation, saving the city a total of $3.77 million over the 30-year useful life of the project. The general fund portion is about half a million, the water fund portion is about $600,000, and the wastewater portion is about $2.7 million. We have Cameron Weast here with us tonight, and he's going to just go over the resolutions and the legal documents that were in the packet. So I'll turn it over to him and let him discuss those briefly.
Good evening. Nice to be here again, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So, yes, so for considerations this evening, by way of two resolutions, one for the City Council and then one for the Joint Powers Authority, acting as board members of that authority. Each of the resolutions essentially do the same thing, which is approve the form of the documents that are necessary to issue these bonds. More specifically, the documents that we're talking about are a lease agreement, which pertains to the general fund aspects, which is, by the way, so what the NG report did is it broke out the project equipment in accordance with which enterprise or maybe the city portion of the equipment, which allocation of benefit, or I should say, to establish benefit to each of those particular funds, the general fund, the water fund, the wastewater fund. So when I refer to the general fund and the lease agreement, there's no other funds that are pledged to repay that lease agreement, simply the general fund. There is a year-to-year requirement on that pursuant to the Constitution, so really, this is not a long-term contract. It's really a year-to-year contract that gets renewed each year. So what you'd be committing to is during budget time, you would budget appropriate for those lease payments, assuming you still have the use of that equipment that is benefiting the general fund. So it's a very specific way of doing things under the law. So if you ever lose that equipment, the right to use it in any way, you cannot make a lease payment. So that's the nuanced effect of constitutional law when it comes to general fund pledges. So under this lease agreement, to the extent that you have the use and right to use that solar equipment or HVAC equipment that benefits the general fund, you are obligating yourself to consider under each year to budget appropriate so long as you have the use of that equipment to make those payments for that aspect. The general fund portion is relatively small in comparison to the other portions, but I did want to make that a pledge for you. So the other agreement is an install-and-sell agreement. Under that agreement, there are two components under that agreement. There's a water component and a wastewater component, virtually identical. Again, same concept. The NG report allocates benefit to those funds in accordance with benefits. So what we've done here is to say, to the extent that one of those funds benefits, there's going to be an allocation of debt service that are going to be used to repay the bonds accordingly. Now, what's interesting and different about install-and-sell process versus lease process is that in install-and-sell agreements, there is no acceleration of debt. However, there's also not a right to not make those payments. So to the extent that you even lost that equipment, you're insured for it. There is insurance provisions, so you would have insurance money to cover you. However, you will be, those funds, the water wastewater fund, will have to make those payments regardless of what happens to the equipment. There's also an indenture trust tonight. Really, what that document does is it takes the lease agreement payments and the install-and-sell agreement payments and pledges them to a trustee, a third-party trustee. This is common in bond financing, and I know you've been through this with, you know, a couple of times now, so... But nonetheless, those revenues get pledged to the trustee. The trustee then, under the indenture, has to make those payments to the bondholder. They just hold them as a national bank to make sure the integrity of those funds are handled appropriately and that the bondholders get paid. Under the indenture, that document speaks to the rights and remedies of the bondholders, really. It's really about that, honestly, because the indenture is a document between the agency or the public financing authority and the trustee. And so what happens at that level is that the bonds and the indenture are separate and apart from the install-and-sell agreement and the lease agreement, which is a city's document. So the city has rights and remedies under the lease agreement, install-and-sell agreement, but not under the indenture. The indenture is a document between the authority, the public financing authority, and the trustee. So what happens in that scenario is that the bonds can be issued by a joint powers authority under the law. It's not really the city's name that's on those bonds per se, but because you're going to be acting as the board members, which you're still the City Council, and you're acting as several agencies' board members, your name indirectly is on the entire bond issuance, it's going to be. But the bonds will be issued by the public financing authority and not the city. To accomplish this, there's a draft preliminary official statement. It's a comprehensive document that lays out all the legal underpinnings, the legal documents also lays out, under each agreement, there are specific terms that apply to the bonds. And so what happens is the preliminary official statement lays out how those monies flow, which I just spoke about, the general fund, the install-and-sell fund, and what rights and remedies the bondholders have under the indenture. So that's a document that is very comprehensive. It's a city's document. It's not the consultant's. It's not, staff has done a wonderful job of shepherding this to you. But again, I think it's important this, to make sure that, and I know you have, everybody's read that, and there's a lot of really interesting details in there about the city. There's a couple of parts in there that we, I think, everybody tried to put their, really, a lot of extra time in to make sure that it was accurate, correct, and that reflects the true nature of Lakeport, which is a beautiful, wonderful community, wonderful assets and amenities, and that should have come out in this document. So it's not done yet, so if you have any comments, I would encourage you, if you do want to continue tonight, if you agree to adopt the resolutions, encourage you to continue to make some comments to staff. Let's get in this document what the message that you'd like to see in here and reflect in the community as a whole. So that's that document. There's also a draft bond purchase contract. That's the contract between the underwriters that would buy these bonds for resale to bond investors. And again, that's standard in the industry to have an underwriter to underwrite, intermediate the deal. There's also a continuing disclosure agreement, and again, norm. It happens with every published financing. You have to do, under SEC laws, you have to have this agreement in place. And it's really just an annual disclosure that happens, your staff handles each year for the city. You're completely up to date, by the way, on your continuous disclosure filings. That's rare. Most cities and counties and public agencies cannot state this, so you're doing a wonderful job, by the way, which I think is really a nice thing to be a part of, because there is a lot of work that goes in that. So you have to keep up every year, and if you don't, you're not able to issue bonds, and your credit rating will take a hit. So you've been doing a great job on that aspect, but that's the continued disclosure report. Again, there is a public hearing that you will have to open before you take any action here. You'll open it here if there's any public comment, close it, and you're able to go ahead and take action. I'd be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions from council? No? We'll go ahead and open, or was there any further input there?
No.
All right. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. All righty. So we're going to close the public hearing, bring it back to council.
Well, I have a couple of questions, but I don't know if it has to do with this or actually the work that's going to be done. Do we have to have these bonds all sold before we start putting the solar panels up? Or is it going to be, they're going to put the panels up while we're selling the bonds? Or while third parties are selling the bonds?
No. I mean, we plan to close and sell the bonds in July, and shortly after that, projects will be underway. So we'll sell the bonds.
You're going to sell the bonds first so you have the money to pay for their project?
Correct.
That's one thing I'm concerned about.
There's no further discussion? Ready for a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the subject resolutions to authorize and direct the issuance of the bonds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Who's in charge of keeping that paper?
That's a Nick thing.
Is that a Nick name?
Well done, Nick.
Way to go, Nick.
Bravo. Moving on to council business. First item is introduce the zone change ordinance for the Pacific West Communities Parcel Map Project, ZC 17-02, and schedule a public hearing for a second reading of the zone change ordinance and adoption of a resolution for a general plan amendment, GPA 17-01, and mitigate negative declaration based on the environmental review initial study, ER 17-01, on July 17, 2018. Kevin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. The applicant is seeking a general plan amendment and zone change for property located at 1255 Martin Street in conjunction with a parcel map to divide this 11.48 parcel into three separate parcels. The planning commission reviewed this application in May and approved the associated environmental review initial study and the tentative map portion of the project, and made a recommendation to your body to approve the general plan amendment and zone change as presented. At current, the parcel split designated with approximately the one-third to one-half of the northeast section of the property designated as high-density residential, with the remaining portion designated low-density residential. The proposal would realign the general plan and zoning designations to match the proposed tentative parcel map configuration, with parcels one and two, the front Martin Street being designated high-density residential, and the remaining portion in the back of the property that has access via Smith Street to be designated low-density residential. The general plan requires a resolution to be approved, but the zone change requires a passage of ordinance, which thus triggers the need for the second hearing. So what's being requested this evening is that the City Council set a public hearing for July 17, meaning for the second reading of the ordinance, and then also take a look at the resolution for the general plan amendment at that time. And then it's completely within the City Council's authority to re-review the tentative parcel map and associated environmental document at that time as well. And I can certainly answer any questions about the project this evening and as well at the public hearing if it's moved forward. And we're looking at putting that on the July 17 agenda as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Kevin. Is there anyone who would like to address this for public input? No? Then we'll bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to introduce the proposed zone change ordinance and to schedule a public hearing for July 17, 2018, for the second reading of the zone change ordinance and adopt the general plan amendment resolution and mitigate negative declaration for the proposed project.
That was under options, and it wasn't the suggested motion, but...
Well, everything except the need to introduce.
Yeah.
Except we need the July 17 date. Oh, good point. Yeah, keep going, George.
Oh, I want more, no. So where do I go?
Just go down a few lines.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. Move to introduce the zone change ordinance for the Pacific West Communities Parcel Map Project, ZC 17-02, and schedule a public hearing for the second reading of the zone change ordinance and adoption of the resolution for the general plan amendment, GPA 17-01, and mitigate negative declaration based on the environmental review and initial study, ER 17-01, on July 17, 2018.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we will, let's see. Our next item, approve the proposed resolution declaring dry weeds, brush, and similar vegetation creating a fire hazard upon vacant and large lots throughout the city to constitute a public nuisance and direct staff to utilize the administrative citation procedures outlined in Chapter 8.30 of the Lakeport Municipal Code to abate said public nuisance weeds. Kevin?
Yes. This one is kind of a formality of dealing with our hazardous weeds. Chapter 8.28 of the municipal code outlines a procedure per California Government Code on the abatement of said weeds. However, what we're asking here is that the council declare those existing weeds to be a public nuisance, but rather than go through the process of the city physically abating those, we use the administrative citation process for existing property owners who have not abated their weeds. As you recall, we brought this, we amended 8.28 a couple of months ago, changing that date for compliance from after July 4 to June 1 to be consistent with, you know, CAL FIRE regulations and other areas as well. It goes without saying that why this is important. A lot of folks, I do want to reach out to the public and say thank you for those folks that did go ahead and abate their weeds prior to that June 1 deadline. Unfortunately, some site visits early on, right after that June 1 deadline, showed that we have approximately, I think it was, we have over 150 parcels, I think, still that have high weeds, and a lot of them are in that priority area that we have along our western city boundary. So with that, I concluded also in here a sample sort of 10-day letter of what will be sent, assuming the council declares these weeds to be a public nuisance. We will immediately send out these 10-day notice to the listed parcels that are in that resolution and hopefully get compliance. The last time we did this, what tends to happen is about 50% of those will comply, and then after that, we have to move on to the next step and begin issuance of administrative citations. Any questions?
Being on the border of the Passantino property, where there's like, I don't know, 20 acres or so of walnuts, and there's grasses and weeds all that, do they have to mow the entire area or only out like 100 feet, or how does that roll?
There are special provisions for parcels that are of a certain size, and generally that's 30 feet or more around the perimeter, and then they also have to have passing lines, I think, every 50 feet, where they have to mow down 10-foot sections. So it's pretty detailed on how those parcels are supposed to be maintained. And we had several where you can tell that some attempt at compliance was made, but the fire chief, we had some questions. He went out and looked at some of them, said, yes, those are okay, and a couple of them need a little bit more work, so... But the ordinance is pretty, it's pretty specific on how to be compliant for those large acreage.
And when they have a compliance issue, they call the fire chief, and he comes out and gives them the yay or nay?
Yeah, either the fire chief or community development. We go out and look at it if we've got any questions on it, especially those large acreage parcels. We usually defer to the fire chief to go out and look and make that decision. We did a tremendous amount of community outreach this year, not only to property owners, but also to contractors. I mean, the biggest complaint we've gotten years past is that we'll supply a list of, you know, contractors, but by this time of the year, they're completely booked, and so people are wanting to comply, but there's nobody there to do the work. So we did a lot of outreach this year. We tremendously expanded the number of people that are available to do this work. So I'm hoping that that pays off. There shouldn't be a reason why folks aren't able to find somebody to go out and do that this year.
The other thing was, there was some community outreach or outrage about the weed abatement in the West Side Community Park Schlesinger property that they were responsible for, they being Schlesinger and not the people that live there. If that was, those are the kind of corporate things where you send out letters and they get around to it, you know, in like August or something. Is that something that fits in with the same thing they get their...
They would get a 10-day notice. I believe that property is on the list. They get a 10-day notice if they did not comply with that in a timely manner, we would have the ability to go seek administrative penalties on them through 8.30.
And finally, I think that moving it from after 4th of July, which is probably the most explosive time for the possibility of fireworks and people with kids with matches and everything else, I think that was a good move.
Well, not only that, I think, you know, the other problem I always had, I was always scared, here we are sending notices out to folks in the end of August, encouraging them to hurry and to mow their weeds. So moving it up close, I mean, they're, you know, we still have fire hazards, but it's not nearly as bad as it is where in the past couple of years where we were getting around to this in August versus June.
Which is way too late together.
So we have the administrative citation. Let's say, you know, parcel A, we issue the administrative citation. Is there a point where we can actually go out and abate the weeds and charge them for it?
There is a process to do that, yes. We still have that tool in our basket.
If you can find a contractor or public works.
No, but that's a good question, because we're just fine, 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 fine them all summer, but it's, the problem's still there, then it's not really solving the problem.
Correct. No, we do have that ability in our toolbox.
And how long would that process take?
It's outlined in there. It's unfortunately very bureaucratic. I mean, there's a whole huge accounting process that goes on there and lots of additional noticing, you know, there's an appeal process that they have. You know, that's why we've kind of leaned a little bit more on seeing the administrative citation process as being the best tool, but that process is available to us.
It would be way too late for fire season. We'll get them loaded. It's too bad you can't issue a citation. You have 15 days to correct it. After that, we're sending guys with weed eaters and a credit card reader.
Credit card reader.
The ordinance that we have is basically what state law allows us to do. So the procedure requires a notice that there's a nuisance, and then it gives them notice that we're going to come on the property and we're going to abate the nuisance, and you'll have to pay for it. Then there is, as Kevin was saying, there's a procedure that allows, we have to give them notice of how much it costs to abate, and then you have the opportunity to come and protest that amount before the City Council, before any of that can be actually put on the tax form. the tax forms or something. So, there, you know, it's, it is a procedure, and I think it's intended to give everyone their due process rights in this private property as well. So, it's a balancing that the state legislature found when they were balancing individuals' property rights and hazards that opposed by...
So, when we changed the law, did we send out notices to the people that have, had been saying, we have changed the law, this is what's going to happen here in June 1st type thing?
Correct. The fire department sent out noticing at the beginning of May, which they normally would do at the beginning of June, informing them of the, the date change and the, and the regulations. And it included, you know, what Kenny was alluding to before. If you have a property of a certain size, there's different regulations versus a, a residential law.
And they sent those out using the property, the property owners, not just who's living there?
That's correct. We, we send it out using the property owner's information.
All right. Any public input on this item? Seeing that, we'll bring it back to the board.
If there's nothing further, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the proposed resolution declaring dry weeds, brush, and similar vegetation creating a fire hazard upon vacant and large lots throughout the city to constitute a public nuisance, and direct staff to utilize the administrative citation procedures outlined in chapter 8.30 of the Lakeport Municipal Code to abate said public nuisance weeds.
Second. We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, authorize the cancellation of the regular meeting of July 3, 2018.
I have a but here, so that's the question here.
Everybody does.
So, what we're asking, we're asking for is the council to look at perhaps canceling the July 3, 2018, because that'll be right before the 4th of July holiday. This room will be in the process of being transformed into the command center at that time for, for the large event, the park. And so, we can still have a special meeting if there are items that come up. Right now, we do have one item that potentially requires action in regards to our H-SIP restriping bid one. We'd like to get that one moving forward. So, what I'm proposing to the council is we could have a quick meeting on July 3 to, you know, address that item, or we can look at setting a special meeting of the council at another date. I was originally looking at June 26, which is next Tuesday, but Wilda's announcement reminded me that the strategic plan workshop, the World Cafe presentation will be using the room on that night. So, we could do it on July 10, which is the following Tuesday. However, I know, I believe Councilman Spur is going to be out of town on that date. But we can look at other dates as well, or, so we can look at a, a short meeting on that regular date of July 3.
Well, it doesn't require that we have 100% attendance to take care of a...
So, it's easier.
If we could come in and knock it out, if we're all available, the rest of us, or even what, three of us?
What about next week, just starting a little bit early and doing it in the other room?
You can, you can do a special meeting on 24 hours' notice, and we can notice it for a different location.
So, we could potentially meet in the front conference room. Is it a lengthy item, or...
No, it's, it's a big presentation, you know, for, for a public works project. I don't anticipate it to be, but I'd be wrong on those things.
Next Tuesday would be better for me than the 3rd.
What time is it?
Next Tuesday, I will be out of town, I believe.
It's 6 to 8, but I imagine they're going to be, you know, putting, putting together...
We don't always record special meetings, but if we were to record it, it might be easier to have it in here, but maybe just have it before. There's a lot of setup, though. Are you doing...
Is the room going to be changed around for that?
Yeah.
Okay, so. We could get by without the recording.
So, without the recording, if we did 5, do you need an hour?
No.
So, we could do 5:30 in the front conference room, and then those of us coming to the economic development meeting, can you go from there?
It shouldn't take more than five minutes.
That's about it.
So, at 5:45 in the front conference room?
I want to get you a seat.
You could come in and save your seat beforehand.
Put your purse there. Can't put your wallet.
All right, okay.
Does that work for everybody?
I would be out of town next week, but...
But we're just now, we're just moving to cancel the meeting right now.
Correct.
Correct. And then as far as rescheduling, that's it.
I can send an email out and make sure we have forum.
I think the idea of having it before the meeting is an excellent idea, because then we're right here.
Why, thank you.
We're right here for the economic presentation, and that way, we can't weasel out of it, except Tim already did.
Advanced weaseling.
Okay, sounds like council's done with comments and questions. Any public input on this item?
Are you sure? Hurt the cats here.
So, Madam Mayor, if there's nothing else, I move to authorize the cancellation of the regular meeting of July 3, 2018.
Second. Great. We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City Council Communications, Kevin?
Only to reiterate what Wilda already said, that the economic development strategic plan that will be posted on here on the 26th. Dr. Iler of San Jose State is helping us put it on. It's going to be in a World Cafe type mode. I don't know if anybody's ever participated in that, but it's more of a, kind of a workshop presentation sort of thing, where, you know, there's different tables for different topics. People sit down there informally, get to draw on maps, and it's, it's way more interactive than, you know, just your standard public forum. So, I'm saying it's going to, it's planning, it's going to be fun. It's an important, it's an important document.
It's just so much fun.
Absolutely, definitely. Now, and we'll, we'll, we'll do on the same thing. We'll, we'll get it out on our social media accounts as well. But they're doing three workshops. If you can't make the Lakeport one on the 26th, Tim, it will be in Clear Lake and, and Middletown.
They're all next week.
Now, they are, next week on the 26th is the Lakeport one, but then the following week...
The 27th is Clear Lake.
The 27th is Clear...
This Thursday is Middletown.
Okay, so they're all in the same week, yes, so, sorry. But yes, please come and attend. It's an important one. There's a lot of, a lot of good stuff going on with the...
Was that the same gentleman that was at Woodland College?
Yes, yes.
For sure.
Yeah, that was it.
That's all I hear.
Kevin?
No report?
No?
No report?
No report.
Chief?
Yes, a couple of things. On June 29, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., we have a coffee with a cop over at Angelina's Bakery on Main Street, if anyone's interested in coming.
What time?
From 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. on Friday, June 29, to Angelina's.
Okay.
And then on July 4, we have the operational briefing starting at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers for the fireworks event that's going to happen that evening. And we'll also be barbecuing food for the cops and public works, so if anyone's interested, stop by, you're welcome to. And that's it.
Thank you.
We can watch you eat, and we can also, you can eat also for all that money. Except for George.
Ellie?
No report.
Kevin, one more question?
No report.
Want to move to the other leg?
I had an interesting, I was inviting Forrest Augner to a, to a event this coming weekend, and I called Forrest, and I was so impressed. I called him and I said, Forrest, I says, my water tastes horrible. And he goes, you didn't get it from me. We do a fabulous job here, and I have a passion for what I do, and there is no way that you could possibly get any bad water from my plant, because I am a perfectionist. And I was like, whoa, dude. I love this. So, anyway, I thought that was the idea of, no, I am not taking, it reminds me of, you know, my meat business. It's like, no, that did not happen. It did not go out from our plant that way. Something else happened, and so I, I give him kudos for being such a perfectionist. And I will reiterate what he said a year ago. I tried to take a Rotary Club visit to his place, and he goes, we are not doing anything until the floor is fixed and this place is in perfect condition. And I know we just had it, and I had another event and I missed it, but I know that Paul and Forrest were very proud of what they've done over there, and I want to give those guys kudos for being such, if not in the absolute pursuit of excellence, actually being perfect, that's even better yet. So, congratulations to the, the water people over there, Forrest and his group.
Councilor Medina?
I love that floor over there. It looks so good. You got to go check it out. This weekend was the Beer and Wine...
Swine Fest.
Well, no, the, in Lakeport on Saturday was the, is it Homemakers Beer and Wine Festival? And it was huge and really well-attended, and the park looks amazing. And people were talking about it, and it just was a really good time. And then the VW show was great, same thing, tons of VWs out there. And the farmer's market seemed to be really well-attended, too. It just looks so pretty and great in the park right now. And happy 4th of July, I can't wait for the fireworks. Woo!
Mayor, proof. Woo!
No report.
All right, so I have nothing else to report except just to wish folks a happy Juneteenth. And take a moment to recognize how important it is to treat people like people. Thanks very much.